And for them, they're down here.
No sir.
We're waiting for Phil Harper to get here.
They will have up in the door. There will be no peach or taking tonight.
Now we're got, you're the only one going down.
Oh sir.
You're gonna pet the dog.
King lives up here.
Somebody wrote this song about us, I guess.
Who again?
Everybody ready? Here we go. Good evening and welcome to the city council meeting of the city of Lenore for Tuesday, March the 18th, 2025. We welcome you here this evening. We have some very special events tonight that we're so glad that so many of you could join us. As we normally do at start our meeting, we will have a moment of silence and then we will remain standing to salute our country with our pledge of allegiance. As we go to that time, I would like for you to keep several in your thoughts and prayers. Our council member Todd Perdue and his wife Catherine and family, please keep them in your, in your thoughts and prayers as they go through some things right now that we're praying for that will be, will turn out and be really good. So we're, we're thinking about Todd and Catherine and all the family there. So please keep them in your thoughts and prayers as, as we move forward. And just pray for our country. Please keep our country in your thoughts and prayers as we continue to move forward and changes are being made and we're, we're trying to come and be a better place. And please pray for everyone to come together in any way we can. Now please join us.
Thank you. Please salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Tonight we will start out with the introduction of, and let's don't remember, we're, we're not going to the dogs, but we are going to introduce them, our, our canines tonight and bring them out. I'm going to bring Major Wilson up and we're going to meet, first we'll meet Mia with Patrolman Chase Miller, Caesar with Corporal Herbert Reed, Gingus with Patrolman Caesar Rubio, and the dog that has been with us, Atos, but got it right, Patrolman Logan Barrett. So, Major, glad to have you. Chief Phillips is a little under the weather today, so we decided we better not let him come, so.
Thank you Mayor, Council, Mr. Hilda Brand. Just a quick, no, our department canine unit's been going on since the late eighties, early nineties. Great, successful program, both as a criminal deterrent and as a, as a community partnership. We're doing a lot of different things with a lot of school groups, a lot of community groups, our citizens canine academy. So it's just a great thing. First thing I wanted to do real quick, and he's not expecting this, is all of us are, are sports fans and it's hard to have a team without a coach. And so Lieutenant Portheris is our Criminal Investigations Division Lieutenant, and he's also a master trainer for police canines. And so that's huge for us. People have to send their, their canines and their handlers off to school. That becomes a very expensive endeavor. And so we're very fortunate to have Lieutenant Portheris here that we do everything in-house, everything in-house. So that's, that's a big part of the success for our program. Canine Atos, five-year-old German Shepherd, born and imported from the Czech Republic, and he's been with us since 2021. Patrolman Logan Barrett been with us for about two and a half years. He is a new handler. So this is his new canine partner and Canine Atos is new handler. So they, all the dogs just certified last week, so they're all certified and ready to hit the road. When they certify, it's not only the dog, the dog and the handler have to be certified as a team. And so I can't, even though I was a past canine handler, I'm not certified to work with, with Atos, but Logan Barrett is. And so done great and he, he's excited. So next, Canine Gingus. Canine Gingus is a three-year-old English Springer Spaniel. He was born and imported from the Netherlands and he is a detection dog. And so scent work, which is narcotics tracking, evidence searches, things like that. He was assigned to Caesar Rubio and Patrolman, or Master Patrol Officer Caesar Rubio has been with us for about six years.
Said Andy, it's a good thing nobody got up and left when he came in.
Yeah, right now we're doing pretty good. We're doing pretty good. Canine Mia. Mia is a three-year-old German short-haired pointer, born and imported from Germany. She is also a single, what we call a single-purpose dog, a scent-detection dog. Her handler, Patrolman Chase Miller, he's been with Lenore Police Department for about two and a half years. And so these, these two dogs are, Atos is a, is a, he's a veteran. These two dogs have been at it for a couple of months. And so they've got a lot of continued training to look forward to.
Major, didn't you say that these dogs were purchased with drug money?
They were. All these dogs, every one of them, even our prior dog, all purchased with asset forfeiture money.
That helps the budget.
Yes, it does.
Cause they're not cheap.
Canine Caesar is a Belgian Shepherd. He was born and imported from the Netherlands. He is a full patrol dog. And so he, along with Atos, are what you call dual-purpose dogs. They are not only trained in scent detection, but they're also trained in apprehension work, handler protection, and, and different aspects of dual-purpose work. His handler, Corporal Herbert Reed, Corporal Reed has been with us for about four years. And so this is our new canine unit. And we're excited and a lot of good things ahead, a lot of good things ahead.
Y'all actually gonna do a picture?
We, we, we're gonna stay up here though.
Yeah, I wanna get down there in the middle of it.
I'm gonna be right here. I'm good.
Council, y'all can just stay there.
Oh yeah, oh thank you.
He's looking at you like.
He's sniffing you.
He looks friendly.
Ain't no dog.
Sure, we'll get him out here and we'll get him.
Get a little closer. Come on, close in.
We'll do a couple with the, just camera, then a couple with the.
I've known y'all for a while. I didn't know this.
All right, everybody look at me.
Careful the way you flash that thing.
Everybody smile. All right, let me do this camera.
As long as I watch the flash.
That doesn't.
All right, ready? One, two, three, look at me, cheese, cheese.
Dog biscuit.
All right.
Thank you.
We have a canine here, right? We're getting visitors.
Good?
Yes, sir.
All right. Next on agenda, we have a very special recognition. And Doug, we didn't, all these officers didn't come just to make sure you were safe.
Though tonight is a very special recognition and it's one of those bittersweet times where we, we, we want to say so much, so many good thank yous to, to Doug Johnson and what he has meant to this community and friendship and what he has meant to the city of Lenore, Colwell County, and all the counties that Blue Ridge represents in western North Carolina. Part of the Blue Ridge Board is here tonight. We welcome you guys and all y'all, y'all that are here. And we'll, we'll get everybody introduced in a little bit. But, but Doug, it's, it's been a pleasure working with you and we want you to know that we are so excited for you and your retirement. I know your wife and grandchildren and children are all excited that you're going to be with them and well-deserved. Forty-six years that you have given of yourself to not only the Blue Ridge, but this community in so many ways. So many Appalachian State, and I can name you all so many that, that, that we are excited about and we appreciate it. So if you'll come up and join me, we have a couple of things that we would like to say special for you. And again, thank you for all that you have meant to, to us. This resolution is honoring Douglas Wayne Johnson. Whereas Blue Ridge Energy is a member-owned electric cooperative utility serving some 80,000 members in Colwell, Watauga, Ash, and Allegheny Counties and part of Wilkes, Avery, and Alexandria Counties. And whereas Douglas Wayne Johnson graduated from Appalachian State University with a Bachelor of Science in Business Administration, started working at Blue Ridge Energy in 1979 and took over, you guys brought that out of college. And took over as Chief Executive Officer of the cooperative 10 years later in 1989. And whereas during his 46-year career, Doug led the cooperative with great distinction and vision and implemented many improvements to grow the business. And whereas these improvement, those improvements included adding a propane and fuel subsidiary in 1998, as well as Ridgling, a business-to-business dark fiber provider, both of which added jobs and vital services locally, and their success continues to help hold down member rates. And whereas in 2003, Doug provided the leadership necessary for the cooperative to secure and manage its own wholesale power purchases rather than using outside entities, which has also benefited members by helping hold down rates due to more favorable wholesale power costs. And whereas Blue Ridge Energy is consistently ranked among the top five of all utilities across the nation for its customer service and has been recognized in the top quartile of all utilities in the nation for reliability. And whereas Blue Ridge Energy has been a wonderful community partner and has assisted with financing City of Lenore Fire Station Three, the lighting at Matt Cook Stadium in downtown Lenore, has pledged financing for a new City of Lenore Fire Engine, which we're excited about, as well as numerous other projects in Colwell County. And whereas Douglas has announced his retirement from Blue Ridge Energy at the end of June 2025. Now therefore it being resolved that I, as Mayor of the city and on behalf of the Lenore City Council and all of our citizens do hereby congratulate Douglas Wayne Johnson on his retirement and thank him for providing reliable electricity to residents and businesses in the city of Lenore, Colwell County, and the region. Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much.
You're very, you're very welcome.
Thank you.
One of the things I cherish so much. One of the things I cherish so much is our friendship. I'll say that.
For sure.
We've been friends a long time now.
Yes, we have. And I have one more thing to present to you tonight. Was it very special? I can get it loose from my fingers now. But this is a key to the city, the highest honor that we can present to anyone in our community. This means that you have served not only the city of Lenore, but Colwell County in this area in just such a wonderful and special way. And I'm proud to present you this, presented to Doug Johnson, Chief Executive Officer, Blue Ridge Energy, in honor and recognition of 46 years of outstanding and dedicated public service, 1979 to present, 46 years by Lenore City Council, Josephville Gibbons Mayor, and it's March 18th, 2029. You're very welcome. You're very welcome. I'll hold this one and let you, let you speak if you want to.
Well, Mr. Mayor and distinguished members of the city council and staff of our great city, I have always said with great pride, Blue Ridge Energy is headquartered in Lenore, North Carolina. And we were started in Lenore and Colwell County in 1936. And I have bragged about that for my entire career and have been proud of the fact that we're such an important part of this wonderful city. I moved here in 1986, Todd. It's hard to believe that I've lived in, I lived in Colwell County for 39 and almost 30 of those in Lenore. So I love this place. I love the people of this town and this county. And Blue Ridge is so honored to be a part, not only in providing electricity, but as the mayor said, in doing things to make life better for the people in this area. So I am highly honored. I deeply appreciate the very kind words and I appreciate the key to the city. That's very nice and deeply appreciated. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Do you want to introduce the all that's here with Blue Ridge?
Oh my gosh.
I was going to choose you there instead of me because I would miss somebody.
Okay, we got Jeff Johns, President of our board, Kelly Melton is Secretary Treasurer of our Board of Directors, and Katie Woodle, who is heir apparent to the CEO. She'll take the reins on April 1 and then I'll work for her for three months till I retire. So we found that to be kind of interesting. And I told Katie, I said, well, you're going to be my boss for the next three months. I'll just have to do what you tell me to do. So the role will reverse. Amy Crowder will become the next Chief Financial Officer replacing Katie. Crystal Spencer is the next Chief Administrative Officer. She's in an elect role right now. And then Jason, I'm drawing your last name blank.
Lingle. He's my next-door neighbor, Rudy.
I knew I'd do it somewhere, so God forgive you. Jason, forgive you. Jason Lingle, who's Director of Community Relations, Member Relations at Blue Ridge. So did I miss any others?
Alan.
Alan, did I miss you?
You can't miss Alan, everyone's.
My Chief Operating Officer and one of the top heroes of L.A., Alan Burke, one of the guys that helped us hold it all together, toughest salvage in our history. Alan, my apologies.
Don't worry.
I went from.
That's right.
Eros are behind me. Eros are coming up.
We're coming in.
I'd be remiss if I didn't call that Robin Nichols from Duke. We were hugging at the beginning saying, you know, she worked for Duke, I worked for Blue Ridge. But we buy all our power from Duke Energy and we've been good friends for a long time. And I appreciate you being here too, Robin.
Wonderful relationship there. Yeah, well, thank you. We're gonna do a picture, Council? We were going.
All right. Like y'all done this before.
Few times.
I was told that key of, we'll start one of those fire trucks. One, two, three.
There you go.
One, two, three, cheese.
Dog?
Got it.
Thank you very much. Thank you all again.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Appreciate it. Thank you all very much.
Very welcome. Doug, thank you again, and, and we're very proud to have shared this with you for so many years. Look forward to seeing you. As you said a minute ago, I'll see you in Boone for sure. Okay, now we have another special recognition tonight, and this is on behalf of the city council. We're going to be presenting some proclamations to representatives of Blue Ridge Energy and Duke Energy in honor and celebration of Lineman Appreciation Day, which is recognized annual on Tuesday, April the 18th. So we're going to do that here in March. And we have a couple of proclamations to give. I'm going to ask Robin and the linemen if they will come up and Blue Ridge, we'll do it, we're going to do them together. If that's okay? Yeah. Got some linemen coming up and Alan, if you want to join us, please.
First of all, thank y'all for what you do every day. I know with Helene was here, what a, what a job, what a task. It was unbelievable. I remember I woke up the next day and walked down to my house and my street was blocked. I drove out, this street was blocked, this street was blocked. And I'm going, holy cow, this is going to be a nightmare. And it was. But you guys were there, but it was all restored. And I heard, I know stories from Robin and Doug and Alan that you didn't, you didn't go on until you had people's power on. So we appreciate it. Thank you so much for what it is and it means, you know. You don't know how much we miss it. So I was out five and a half days and I thought I was in the worst place in the world, but I wasn't near what some people went through. Probably still going through at this stage. So we do appreciate everything that you do. Thank you. Keeping the power on and the lights on. This is a proclamation for Line Worker Appreciation Day. Whereas on April 10th, 2013, the United States Senate passed a resolution to recognize April 18th annually as National Lineman Line Worker Appreciation Day. And whereas the profession of the electrical line worker is steep in personal, family, and professional tradition. And whereas line workers are often first responders during storms and other catastrophic events, working to make the scene safe for other public safety officials and to expedite the return of vital electrical power to our communities. And whereas these brave men and women work with thousands of volts of electricity high atop power lines 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, risking and sometimes losing their lives to keep electricity flowing. And whereas line workers are often faced with dangerous conditions far from their families as they work to construct and maintain energy infrastructure throughout the state of North Carolina and the United States. And whereas line workers must use their technical knowledge, physical strength, and ingenuity to achieve success in challenges they face every day. And whereas the city of Lenore City Council thanks these skilled, heroic line workers to brave hurricanes, ice storms, snowstorms, floods, and other natural disasters to maintain our community's energy grid. Now therefore it being resolved that I, as Mayor, and on behalf of the Lenore City Council and all of our citizens, do hereby proclaim Friday, April the 18th, 2025, as Line Worker Appreciation Day in the city of Lenore, North Carolina, this the 18th day of March, 2025. Thank y'all.
Thank you very much. And we would like to get a picture. How would you want to, you want to do this one?
Who all's gonna be in it?
Everybody.
Everybody here.
You're gonna do everybody together or you want to do the Duke group and the Blue Ridge group?
All their friends.
Doug said, we're friends.
Let's do them together. We'll stand up. Counsel. Okay, Counsel will be up there.
They just got a prayer to make sure of. Cause they may think about being it.
All right. Can you open the resolution up to kind of show it, the paper, turn it this way? That, yes?
Out the way you read it, boy.
And then everybody else, I'll put your hands, guys, on the nail by your side. I don't know if I'm all, Mayor, do this way, just like.
All right.
Yeah, you're good. I think I can see everybody. I'll move back. Thank you, thank you. All right, we'll do a couple with the camera. One, two, three, cheese. Anybody else? One, two, three, cheese. Think I got it.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Again, the importance of how much these people mean to us is unbelievable in our community. So thank you so much for being with us tonight. Thank you, Katie. We look forward to working with you very much. So thank you. Doug, thank you. All right. The exciting evening. That's great to, to honor such, such great people tonight. All right, we'll move on then to a matter scheduled for public hearings this evening. This first one is conditional rezoning request. This is for 1373 Delwood Drive Southwest. We'll hold the hearing to consider a conditional zoning district CZ 11 request as submitted by applicant Joe Bogdan to convert the education building on the Whitnall United Methodist Church site at 1373 Delwood Drive into a group dwelling with other site improvements and development standards. Staff recommends approval of the conditional zoning ordinance based on the following statement. The planning board also approves this rezoning request based upon the evidence presented through the planning board. Note, the six special conditions proposed for the CZ 11 ordinance are listed on page four of the staff report included in the agenda packet. We will not read those that are included. We read that the consistency statement is all decisions of the planning board and the city council should be based on consistency of the proposal with a comprehensive plan and any other officially adopted plan that is applicable. The comprehensive plan calls for progressive and sound land use policies that take stakeholder interest into consideration in order to ensure that the city grows fairly, effectively, and efficiently. Additionally, the comprehensive plan calls for the promotion of housing for people in all stages of life and the desire to build community character and revitalize neighborhoods. Whitnall is a focus neighborhood of the 2045 comprehensive plan, and this workforce housing proposal is a legitimate step in the right direction. The proposed CZ 11 district is consistent with the comprehensive plan because it allows for intensification of development on this property with a variety of housing types to meet the changing needs of Lenore's residents of all ages. Okay, I will open the public hearing and I will bring our planning director, Hannah Williams, to the microphone.
Thank you so much, Mayor Gibbons and Council. Yes, this conditional zoning ordinance application was submitted by Blowing Rock Country Club. The President and Chairman of the Board of Directors is. is this parcel across the street on Delwood Drive that is also part of the rezoning. This site is split zoned R15 and R6. Basically, the sanctuary building is in R6 and the rest of the site is in R15. R15 is a single-family zoning district, and R6 is a multifamily rezoning, or residential district, excuse me. The proposed zone is going to be the CZ 11, it would be reflected that way on the zoning map. R6 would be the base district, so R15 would go away completely. The education, one of the conditions in the conditional zoning ordinance would be for the education fellowship hall building to become a dormitory with about 16 bedrooms, as well as communal kitchen and bathroom facilities. The parsonage would be used as a single-family house with traditional occupancy less than six or so. It would not be a group dwelling. The sanctuary would be redeveloped as something else, not really decided on that at this time, but the conditional zoning ordinance proposes several permitted uses to be considered, continuation to be used as a church or a cultural community facility, an event venue, or a daycare, a childcare facility. There's potential for more redevelopment on this site, on these vacant tracts, and the proposed zoning district would be R6 for that. And basically, whatever is allowed in R6 would be allowed here on this site with several different kind of development standards that you wouldn't find in a traditional R6 district, which mostly just has to do with accessing the property. If there were to be new parcels here for, say, a townhome development or bungalow court, small cottage development, excuse me, then they would not need to have public road frontage, but they would need to have common improvements for privately maintained driveway through an HOA or some other kind of property management association. And see if I have anything else. The proposal is supported by several comprehensive plan policies, which include increasing workforce housing, adding that missing middle housing type, or housing types where appropriate, and reusing a vacant building. So we think that reusing the Whitnall Church site with its productive use would be a great, you know, reuse of the building. Also, planning board recommends approval of this conditional zoning ordinance and adopted the consistency statement that Mayor Gibbons has just read for us. And I want to submit the staff report for the public record that you can see here. And I wanted to just show you the, scrolling here, the concept plan that would be recorded along with the ordinance.
Will you review the six conditions?
Yes, I can. I will leave the site plan up here and I will go over the conditions that are in the ordinance. So the zoning ordinance adds permitted uses by building. The sanctuary is referred to as Building C. The parsonage house is referred to as Building B. And the education building, what would become the dormitory, is Building A. Building A would have a group dwelling for seven or more non-related residents. Building B would be single-family residential, a dwelling for one to six non-related residents. Building C would be permitted to have a community cultural facility, church, synagogue, mosque, daycare center, and event venue. And it provides for a definition of an event venue. And then the undeveloped lots, lots D and E, they have no additional permitted uses outside of the R6 zoning district. As for density, the density of multifamily uses shall default to R6 zoning district. 7.2 dwelling units per acre is the density allowed by right, and 15 dwelling units per acre is the maximum density allowed with a special use permit. So if any, if we wanted to maximize density to 15 dwelling units per acre, they would come back for a special use permit on those undeveloped lots. Density is further broken down for the education building, where any two beds would constitute one dwelling unit. So that's provided for in this zoning ordinance. And as for minimum lot size and frontage, parcels on the affected lots shall maintain the minimum lot size identified in the City of Lenore zoning ordinance and R6 standards. There would be no public roadway frontage for individually platted residential lots for townhomes or bungalow courts or patio homes, as long as the parent tract of the residential development maintains a minimum frontage of 25 feet on a public road. If private roads or common space are developed in conjunction with platted lots, a homeowners' association must be established to provide for the ongoing maintenance of the private roads and the common space. As for ingress and egress, the access point along Delwood Drive shall be maintained and shall be available for use by the existing buildings as well as future development on the site. So a future driveway could be developed through the parking lot on Delwood Drive, which is right here. A secondary access point must be provided for any development containing 30 or more residential units, which may be a private driveway off of Connolly Springs Road or Delwood Drive. There's a driveway to access this property right here on Connolly Springs Road, and it wraps around the campus right here. A cross-access easement shall be required for use by both the upland acreage and the existing building. So if Blowing Rock Country Club were to ever sell off this tract, the zoning ordinance would still rule, and they would need to provide cross-access between the properties. As for lighting, all new and replacement lighting fixtures shall be fully cut off and shielded as to prevent spillover onto adjacent residential properties. As for design, all new, non-residential, attached, single-family, and multifamily structures would need to meet our design standards in the zoning ordinance. And as for signage, they would be able to follow sign regulations in Section 1108 of the zoning sign ordinance. And those are the conditions that are provided for in this ordinance.
Okay.
That concludes my presentation, and I am available for questions. And as I said, the applicants are also here.
Thank you, Hannah. Any questions of Hannah concerning this rezoning request? We are in the public hearing. Counsel? Go on. Okay. Thank you, Hannah. Stay close in case. Anyone else want to address the council concerning this rezoning request? Now's the time to do so. All right. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing, and I will turn it over to council for any action.
Mayor, I'd like to ask the council to consider recusing me from this vote. The applicant's a client of our firm, and as such, we receive financial benefit from that relationship. And I've spoken with the council, and he would advise that I be recused.
Okay. Thank you.
I'd make a motion to recuse.
We have a motion from Council, Mayor Protem Stevens, that we recuse Councilmember Purdue from this vote for the rezoning. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. Okay. Any other questions or concerns? If not, I will entertain a motion concerning this rezoning request as presented.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the zoning change as requested.
All right. We have a motion from Councilmember Presswood that we approve the conditional rezoning request for 1373 Delwood Drive as presented as conditional zoning district CZ 11. Any other comments, questions? And make the staff report part of the record. Is that, okay? That is part of the motion? That's okay. Yes, sir. Thank you.
What he said.
What he said. Okay. No other question? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. That carries unanimously. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being with us and doing this. Thank you, Hannah. All right. Next is our, we will move to our consent agenda items. This tonight consists of minutes of the City Council meeting of Tuesday, March 4th, 2025. Item B is minutes of the committee of the whole meeting of Tuesday, February 25th. Item C are minutes of the City Council budget retreat meeting of Friday, February 28th. Item D is the resolution, approval of the resolution presented to Mr. Doug Johnson upon his retirement as chief executive officer of Blue Ridge Energy. And item E is a location approval. This is being asked for by the Rotary Club. This is for a Rotary peace pole at the Rotary Soccer Complex. This is a recommendation of approval of placing a Rotary peace pole at that soccer complex requested by Jamie Willis, who is the executive director of United Way and the president of the Lenore Rotary Club. So glad to have Jamie with us tonight. Since she didn't want to speak, but if we need to, we can ask her questions if we need to. I know you will. We appreciate that. The peace pole is a monument that displays the message, may peace prevail on earth in different languages on each of its four or six sides. There are an estimated of over 250,000 peace poles in every country in the world dedicated as monuments to peace. This pole, the pole will have languages in English, Spanish, Vietnamese, and Hebrew on that. So that is your consent agenda items, and I will turn it over to council for any discussion and/or motion.
Make a motion to approve consent agenda.
A motion from Councilmember Purdue to approve the consent agenda as presented. No other comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. The peace pole can be done. Thank you very much.
Let there be peace.
Let there be peace. I like it. This guy's a...
Go with peace.
All right. Next on our agenda are requests and petitions of any citizens. If there's anyone tonight who would like to address the council, this is the time to do so. If you will, please come forward and give us your name and address, and we'd be glad to hear what you have to say. All right. Seeing no one there, always glad to have people here. Jennifer, thank you for coming, always. On that, all right, we'll move on. We do not have reports of boards and commissions this evening, so we'll move on to the report and recommendations of the city manager, Mr. Hildebrand.
Mayor, council, a couple items for information this evening. The planning board will meet on Monday, March 24th, at 5:30 in the chambers. The committee of the whole will meet on Tuesday, March 25th, 8:30 a.m., and that's the third floor city hall. That will be your budget meeting and kickoff with more numbers, and we'll have our engineer there to talk about the water and sewer, capital improvement program, and all those good things. So I guess come and be prepared to stay a little bit for that. Then also, the Foothills Research Airport Authority will meet on Wednesday, March 25th, at noon at the airport. Excuse me. Tonight, we have one item for council action. This is the acceptance of the lowest responsive responsible bid for TIP EB 5806, which is Hospital Avenue sidewalk project to Neil Grady and Construction Company, Inc. for the sum of $2,594,361. As most of you are aware, and some predates you, but in 2016, city council was awarded funding for this project through the Federal Highway Administration, North Carolina DOT administered, locally administered program, the LAP program. At that time, as anticipated, this project would cost a million dollars, 800,000 federal, state, and 20% would be the city, $200,000. In 2017, council awarded this project, or at least engineering and design of this project to Weatherrow Engineering out of Raleigh, and the project started design work. Due to NCDOT funding constraints and COVID and other various reasons, this project was paused for a period of time. Then in August of 2023, a DOT provided us a notice to proceed to begin moving forward. Now, the project costs had increased from the $1 million to $3.17 million. As such, the city applied for additional funds to go back and help supplement that funding. We did receive additional funding, $2.536 million, through the LAP program, and the city's 20% match, $634,000 to come to today. In 2024, you selected mattering Craig Engineers out of Hickory to go back and perform the construction, engineering, inspection services for this project. With those things done, the city has completed design work on the project. The right of ways have been acquired for the project. Utilities relocation work is underway, most is complete, and we're here today. So in December of 2024, we put the project out to bid. The city received zero bids due to the demand of contractors right now in the market. Per the general statutes, we went back and rebid the project with a bid opening date of February 27th of last month. One bid was received. That was from Neil Grady and Construction Company out of Hickory, and as I mentioned before, the sum of that is $2.594 million. The bid's been reviewed by Weatherrow Engineers for completeness and compliance with the statutes and the bidding requirements, and they've issued a letter of recommendation for award in your packet. The bid's a little bit over the construction estimate, but it's below the 10% threshold, I think, of DOT, so they're satisfied with that. So our new project total cost for this project to go back and, I guess, put sidewalks from Harper Avenue out to 321 to tie into the library and into the greenway is now $3.5 million in that neighborhood. So based on discussions with the design engineer, we think we can go back and have some cost savings in the project to bring the project back into budget. And so therefore, we recommend award of this project to Neil Grady and Construction. Let me go back and also thank Charles Beck, who was here when it first started, Jared Wright, who was in Public Works in that period of time, Ed Evans, who worked with us, John Hogan today, who's brought it to the finish line, Jenny Wheelock, Hannah Williams, several folks from the Western Piedmont Council Government's NPO. We've gone through several DOT division engineers during this time. So, and several council members. But we're here tonight to go back and hopefully get this project moving forward. And I think John Hogan, if you have specific questions, he can probably answer those, or maybe Hannah Williams can as well, but this has been a journey to get to this point in time. With that, I'll take questions or defer to those folks.
Any questions, Mr. Hildebrand? How about a hallelujah?
How about getting it done?
Let's get it done before he goes up again. Jeez.
And this award would be contingent upon DOT signing off on everything, so, which we anticipate that'll happen, but that's kind of where we are.
That's great.
Mr. Mayor, are you looking for a motion? Yes, sir. You've heard the recommendation from the city manager concerning the awarding of the bid to Neil Grady and Construction Company and the amount he talked about and all of everything that he just said. I'm not going to repeat all that. So entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we accept this lowest responsive bid we've received and approval of the project.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Stevens makes a motion to accept the bid of the lowest bidder and to move on with the project. If there's no other discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you, great.
We're finally on the move with that one. All right, we'll move on to report and recommendations of our city attorney, Mr. Roy.
Nothing, sir.
Nothing at all? Okay. Everything good over in your world over there?
Doing fine over here. Would you like me to sue somebody?
We would know if it was.
All right. I think we've covered everything from the mayor's office tonight that we've been talking about, and I don't know of anything else coming up. Anything from any of our council members that we need to discuss? Not even? Everybody silent? All right. Okay. If nothing else to come before us tonight, we stand adjourned.